Members, this session is about a public finances. Apart from Mister Joseph Chan, I would also like to welcome Miss Kathy Ju and her team. We'll first hear from Mister Chan, the Acting Secretary. Members who would like to ask questions, please press the Request to Speak button. Mister Chan, please.
Thank you. Good morning and good afternoon, everyone. In relation to this session, we will examine the expenditure estimate of the Treasury Branch and related departments. Before the question sessions, I would like to brief members on a few points. In terms of estimates of expenditure, for the Treasury Branch and the departments under its purview for twenty twenty-three and twenty-four, the estimated total expenditure is about forty-five point seven seven billion dollars, which is a drop over the original estimate of seventy, seventy-eight point seven two eight billion dollars by about thirty-two point nine five eight billion dollars, that is forty-two percent. This is mainly because of a drop in estimated non-recurring expenditure of the Treasury Branch by thirty-three point two three one billion dollars. The estimate for last year covered by non-recurring expenditure on the twenty-twenty-two consumption voucher scheme when ten thousand dollars was dispersed to eligible persons took place. In a new round of consumption voucher this year, we will disperse five thousand dollars to eligible persons. That is why this expenditure is lower than that of last year. Discounting the non-recurring expenditure, the estimated total recurrent expenditure of our of this branch and its department is about nine point four nine seven billion dollars, a drop by about three percent of three hundred and thirty-six million dollars over last year. In relation to public finance, we'll continue to adhere to the principles of exercising physical prudence, keeping expenditure within the limit of revenue, committing resources as and when justified, and strictly containing the growth of government expenditure and exploring ways to increase revenue. Regarding our expenditure, because of the decrease in expenditure on antiepidemic and and counter-sagical measures, the estimated total expenditure for twenty twenty-three and twenty-four will decrease by six percent to seven hundred and sixty-one billion dollars, with this ratio to nominal growth domestic product GDP dropping to twenty-five percent. And we will keep zero growth in the civil service establishment. As for revenue, we will propose, we will introduce a bill to the legal to impose an annual special football betting duty of two point four billion dollars on the Hong Kong Jockey Club for five years, starting from twenty-three, twenty-four. We'll also make preparation for the introduction of a progressive rating system for domestic properties in twenty-four and twenty-five, which is expected to bring an additional revenue of about seven hundred and sixty million every year. According to the medium-range forecast, the consolidated account will turn to a surplus for four years, starting from twenty-four, twenty-five, and the fiscal reserves will gradually rise to nine hundred and eighty-three point seven billion dollars by the end of March twenty twenty-eight, which is about fourteen months of government expenditure. On taxation, we have introduced the bills to the legal to increase child allowance starting from the year of assessment twenty-three, twenty-four, and adjust the value bands of at valorum stamp duty rates scale to payable for the sale and purchase or transfer of properties from the twenty-second of February this year onwards. This is to ease the burden on ordinary families of purchasing their first residential properties, particularly small and medium units. In addition, we're conducting a consultation exercise on the proposals to enhance tax certainty of onshore gains on disposal of equity interest with a view to introduce the amendments into legal in the second half of this year. On international tax cooperation, we will put in place a framework for international tax reform that is PAP two point O, announced by the OECD. In accordance with international consensus, we plan to introduce a global minimum effective tax rate of fifteen percent on large multinational enterprise groups with global turnover of seven hundred and fifty million euros. To protect our taxing rights, we'll launch a consultation exercise to make preparation. Fourthly, the Financial Secretary has announced in budget that electronic consumption vouchers with a total value of five thousand dollars will be dispersed to each eligible permanent resident and new arrival age eighteen and above in two installments. For early dispersment, we will first make use of the registration information of last year's consumption voucher scheme to disperse a three thousand dollars first installment voucher on the sixteenth of April this year to about to six point four million eligible persons. The remaining two thousand will be dispersed on the sixteenth of July. In line with the arrangement last year, eligible persons who have come to Hong Kong through different mission schemes or to study here will receive the vouchers in half-value, that is two thousand five hundred dollars. My colleagues and I will be happy to answer the questions from members. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Chan. Twelve members would like to ask questions. I would like to allow sufficient time for members, but we only have thirty-four minutes, so three minutes each. We have Edward Edmund Wong, Dominic Lee, Tony Te, Michael Tian, Jeffrey Lam, Chan Si-hong, Tan Kapiu, Wendy Hong, Lem Chan Sing, Priscilla Lang, Sonny Tan, and Shanghai Long. We'll start with Mister Edmund Wong. Thank you.
I would like to ask about zero three two is my question. The third point of my question is for the IRD, whether they have talked to other regulators to combat bogus accountants. Well, I haven't heard anything concrete, and that itself is a problem. It affects our public image and is related to public finances because it may have an impact on tax revenue. The IRD is very closely related to my sector. Relevant regulators and the department has the duty to tackle this problem. Look at this. That is an advert of a bogus accountant. It's colorful with numerous details, very good graphics, better than that of my company. It's not the case that we don't have the resources to do that, but we're not allowed to issue bills. But with these advertisements, and it's rather rampant, it dampens our image of International Financial Centre because of these rampant activities of bogus accountants when the government has done nothing. As I said, this is very much related to public finances. Does the administration have a timetable to work with regulators to take more concrete actions to help the sector and in the end help Hong Kong? The member has met with us with the tray on the issue of bogus accountants. In relation to the standard quality and ethical standards of accountants, we attach a lot of importance that we have been working with the Hong Kong ICPA to follow up on this area. About the work of the IRD, I'll defer to my colleague, Mister Tam. In the line of work of the IRD, so so far we have not identified any situations involving bogus accountants. If you've come across any cases, and if you think that it has an impact on our tax revenue, please talk to us and we'll see what we can do to follow up. Next, Mister Dominic Lee.
I would like to ask about zero six three, that is in relation to the consumption voucher scheme. I asked about those who have already emigrated. And you said that as at the end of February, you have canceled the eligibility of about two hundred and fifty thousand people. But upon appeal, a hundred and seventy thousand of the cases of a hundred and eighty thousand have been successful, so you have canceled about eighty thousand applications. In the budget last year, well, for those who have emigrated out of Hong Kong, the number stands at a hundred and ten thousand. How come that the cancellation of eligibility cases only stands at about ten thousand or so? Have you missed many of these cases? This time, we have another round of consumption voucher scheme, there may be more in the future. Do you have any effective measures to stop people who don't want to be Hongkongers, who have emigrated to other places to use taxpayers' money to receive a consumption voucher?
Thank you, member, for the question. I'll invite Mister Howard Lee, head of Financial Secretary's private office, to respond. Thank you. The number mentioned by member was in relation to the implementation of the consumption voucher scheme last year. That is by the thirtieth of June twenty twenty-two, when we looked at whether the applicants were eligible for the consumption vouchers. And we looked at a few things, including whether the applicants withdrew MPF because they had to leave Hong Kong permanently and whether over the past thirty-six months, they had stayed in Hong Kong for at least one day and whether their identity cards were issued in Hong Kong or overseas. And also the fourth factor was other relevant factors. We also engaged some independent organizations or partnering organizations to help vet the applications. Two hundred and fifty thousand were disqualified and a hundred and eighty thousand lodged review and a hundred and seventy thousand of them came back to Hong Kong after immigration, for example. And we've looked at the evidence and we decided that they met the requirements, so we approved their applications. So two hundred and fifty thousand applied and a hundred and seventy thousand applications were approved. And we approved some eighty thousand applications in the end, so it helped save four hundred million dollars of taxpayers' money. I'd like to follow up on question zero two zero. Land resources in Hong Kong are valuable. I've always asked the administration not to waste the land resources or keep the land or sites in Hong Kong idle. Government Property Agency plays an important role here. Over the past four years, that is from twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, well, there is a table made by the administration in relation to the land use over the period. I think the performance was not satisfactory in the administration's reply. It's mentioned that some of the staff have to take up different tasks. I believe that the relevant staff were not only responsible for these few projects listed out here, and they also looked at other sites. Is it true that only five projects were handled by the administration over this four-year period? I also would like to follow up on question number zero one eight regarding the office space standard of government buildings. In the reply, since nineteen ninety, there has been a number of amendments to the accommodation regulations. For instance, the Buildings Department required a lot of space for storing documents or drawings. And we surveyors or architects have to go to the office to revise the drawings. I understand that they have been using a new office over the past few years. There are facilities provided for architects or surveyors to revise the drawings. I wonder if the administration implements specific requirements or standards in terms of the use of office space and whether you relax the relevant requirements. I advise the administration to give a brief response due to time restraint constraint. Thank you. On distribution of office space, if certain government departments require additional space for storing documents or drawings, they can make applications to the GPA for additional office space. And we will, upon their requests, offer help and identify suitable space for them. If departments have specific needs, we are also happy to have discussions with them. On question oh zero two oh, please provide written submissions. I'd like to follow up on question number zero four seven. In the budget, the Financial Secretary mentioned that the FS will make a projection, that is, the financial position in Hong Kong by twenty twenty-eight will be stable based on the revenue from land sale and the percentage of it to the GDP, to make this projection. And that the administration in, on the twenty-third of February, I asked about the tax reform proposed by FS and the administration said that they have, they are looking into it, but that the epidemic has just subsided and the administration has to look for the right timing to implement the tax reform. Otherwise, it will cause a lot of trouble to the society. The feedback from various organizations, including the HKICPA and so on, said that we need to have a timetable for it. We roundtable is not suggesting that you have to roll out the tax reform right away. I'm just suggesting that the administration should come up with a timetable. Well, a lot of elites in the society are suggesting the same. The economy is just recovering, and I believe that it is the right time for us to start discussing the tax reform proposal. And when the economy is fully recovered, you can then roll out the tax reform. If it is not the right time for us to discuss now, then when there is surplus to the fiscal reserve, then in you wait until then to discuss this, it may also give people the impression that you are causing trouble. So when exactly is the right timing to discuss this, Secretary? There are a few aspects to this question. First, on tax reform, we have to levy any new types of tax. We have to make serious considerations and ensure that there is enough discussion in the society before we roll out the new measures. This is our position on levying new taxes. Every year when we prepare for the budget, we look at our tax revenue and policy objectives. Do you have a timetable when you will start discussing this? As mentioned, every year when we formulate the budget, we look at our tax revenue. When we have to make a major change to our taxation system, we have to look at the affordability of the public. This year, we are projecting an economic growth. So you see that in the budget this year, we propose to keep the profits tax and salaries tax to remain unchanged. In the long run, well, how long are you talking about? I'm not saying that we're not doing anything with the public finance policies in order to boost the short-term revenue of the government, starting from twenty twenty-three to twenty-four financial year. We're going to ask the Hong Kong Jockey Club to pay a special betting duty for five years. Also, starting from twenty-four to twenty-five, we'll also introduce a progressive rating system. Understood. Mister Michael Tian, if you have different opinions, you can submit supplementary question. Mister Chan Si-hong, we see that the epidemic has subsided, but doesn't mean that it has completely gone away. On the policy of procuring products for items over one point four million dollars, a open tender exercise has to be carried out. A lot of people think that the government is sticking to the rule. I remember that at the beginning of the outbreak of the epidemic, a lot of people are running out of face masks and they have to go scramble for masks. The chief executive then mentioned that we have to set up an assembly line for face masks. I have to declare that I set up a local masks factory, but I did not get any subsidies from the government. But when the government conducted the tender exercise for procuring face masks, they forgot about what they said and still stick to the lowest bidder win principle. If the government wants to support local industry, I hope that when it conducts a tendering exercise, it can introduce elements to include local industries. For example, to raise the technical marks or for those who advocate reducing carbon emission. For government logistics departments since twenty twenty, how many surgical masks, protective gowns, or protective goggles, or protective kits? How many antiepidemic supplies that you procured are manufactured in Hong Kong? Secretary, please. Thank you, member, for the question. At the beginning of the outbreak of the epidemic, it was, well, thanks to members' assistance, we were able to procure a lot of face masks. On procurement, I'll first talk about our principle and then I will go into the details. Government departments from time to time procure items from local sectors. Over the past three financial years, the Development Bureau on Works Procurement, the percentage share of local and local industries was about eighty percent. Chair, sorry, I asked about the procurement of antiepidemic supplies. Well, you asked about the numbers as well. Well, I'll invite colleagues from GLD to supplement. Mister Chan, please. Over the past three years, if you're talking about surgical masks, well, surgical masks manufactured in Hong Kong. Well, according to my statistics, about seventy-nine million surgical masks procured are from Hong Kong. If members require breakdown, I can provide supplementary information after the meeting. Mister Chan, please provide a breakdown to the member after the meeting. Next, Mister Chan Si-hong.
I would like to follow up on zero two eight. That is in relation to the procurement of e-vehicles by departments. Well, for parts two and three, I asked whether the government has set targets for the coming two years and for twenty-three, twenty-four, the number of e-vehicles to be procured by departments and the relevant expenditure. The government only gave me a general reply. They talk about new procurements and well, that they all have to meet relevant requirements, but for various reasons, there are, it, well, e-vehicles cannot be used. So what are these reasons? So in the replacement of government fleet, how do they assess the reasons floated by individual departments to not use e-vehicles? And for the number of e-vehicles procured in the past three years, it's only about thirteen percent. In twenty twenty-two is thirty-nine percent, less than half. In terms of commercial vehicles, in the past three years, about twelve hundred of them. And in twenty twenty, the Department of Health has procured one e-commercial vehicle. That's too little, too few. The technology of e-vehicles rather mature. And on the mainland, they use electric vehicles for commercial vehicles and other types as well. How come the government has not set down a target of procurement of e-vehicles in the coming three years? The government should be the example in the popularization of the use of e-vehicle. This government attaches a lot of importance of KPI. Will they set a KPI for the procurement and use of e-vehicles? I will defer to the Government Logistics Department, Mister Chan, please. Actually, in the use of e-vehicles, the EPD, the Environmental Protection Department, has issued guidelines for mediums, small and medium-sized saloon cars. If there is need for replacement, they will ask for e-vehicles to be bought. So when we receive requests from departments to procure new vehicles, if it is a small or medium-sized vehicle, then we will buy electric vehicles. In relation to la- larger-sized vehicles or special vehicles, in terms of technological depart advancement, the supply and technology of e-vehicles is not that mature currently. There are more small and medium-sized saloon cars in the form of e-vehicles in the market. Of course, we will work with government departments to monitor the supply of e-commercial vehicles. If they can meet our operational needs, then we will consider buying them. My question hasn't been answered. What are the, what are these special reasons? Is it the case a department told you that they don't want to use e-vehicles and you accepted that? That I find unacceptable. Perhaps we'll ask Mister Chan to reply in in writing in relation to this point. Next, Mister Bill Tang.
I want to ask questions asked by my fellow association members. That is sixty-seven. In twenty twenty-two, the administrative cost of the consumer voucher scheme is four hundred million dollars, which is much more. This year, they have earmarked four hundred million dollars again. Why the increase? I have advocated that people who have left Hong Kong should not be eligible, and you have enhanced your scrutiny. You talk about the savings of eight hundred million dollars, but an additional administrative cost of two hundred million dollars. Why? The other question is asked by Mister Kingsley Wong, zero four three. Outsourced workers, you gave us a table. Say for the FHD, a cleaner, hourly pay is thirty-seven dollars to eighty dollars. For LCSD is seventy dollars. So these are non-skilled cleaning work. How come for different departments, there is such a huge difference? For some, they receive the minimum statutory minimum wage of thirty-seven dollars, and there is another group receiving about eighty dollars. Why the huge difference? Because we're talking about same job, different pay. That will cause management problems. Secondly, have you considered not using outsourced workers? Employ them on contract because
Employ them on contract because for every worker, you have to pay seventeen thousand dollars to the agency as a remuneration. How come they receive thirty seven dollars? For statutory minimum um wage, forty dollars, I think it will go ahead on the first of April. So how many um outsourced workers will receive a pay rise from thirty seven dollars to forty? I think your your question is directed at Mister Lee. In twenty twenty one, the administrative cost is about two hundred and forty million dollars and in twenty uh twenty two is risen to four hundred million dollars. And in twenty twenty three, we have drawn reference from my experience last year. So we have earmarked about four hundred million dollars as our administrative cost. And from twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two, how come there was a jump from two hundred and forty million to four hundred million? We have explained two questions asked in last year's special financial commish- uh committee meeting. When we first launched the consumption voucher scheme in twenty twenty one and the secretariat of the cash payout scheme has not been disbanded yet. So the staff members of the secretariat of the cash payout scheme double up to uh work on the consumption voucher scheme. That's why there is a saving on manpower cost. There is also a difference in beneficiaries. In twenty twenty one, six point three million people benefited and twenty twenty six point four three million people. And this year, we reckon there'll be about six point five million people. We will draw reference from last year's experience and we will, as far as possible, uh say reduce the administrative cost. Outsource workers. Well, in the first quarter of this year, we have completed a review. In the policy address of twenty twenty two, um is announced that we will review the arrangement of hiring non skilled workers on an outsourced basis. We worked with the F E H D, Labor Department, the Housing Department, the G P A, we have conducted a review. We're now collating the information for the report. In the second quarter of this year, we will report the result to Legco. For other details, I um will give them to the member afterwards. Miss Wendy Hong. I'd like to ask a macro question. I'm very concerned about sustainability of our public finances as well as the risk of a structural de- deficit. First, cash handout from two thousand eight, when there was a financial tsunami and a huge cash um handout. There were a number of relief measures, reduction and subsidies of electric electricity tariff. And in twenty nineteen, there was a payout of about four hundred billion dollars. For the A E F, there was another spending of about thirty fi- for three hundred and fifty seven billion dollars and a huge amount for the um consumption voucher scheme as well. I don't know whether the consumption voucher scheme is counted towards the A E F, that is the anti epidemic fund or not. But over the past decade, you've made a habit out of giving cash handouts. At the end of March twenty nineteen, we had a reserve about one pon one trillion dollars. In the past of four years, excluding um the reserve, um, we have burned about five billion dollars, so close to forty eight percent. We have further commitments, large reduction of housing, public housing. Every year, there is a subsidy about ten billion dollars. And other expenditure amounting to seven hundred billion dollars, we have less than two hundred billions in our capital works reserve fund. For deficits, starting from twenty nineteen, we've been suffering from a deficit of uh in the operating account. In March this year is over six hundred billion dollars and a deficit for coming three years. So altogether, we're talking about nine hundred and fifty billion dollars. At the initial stage of economic recovery, it's difficult to introduce tax reform to um increase revenues. But we have increased in expenditure, more infrastructure, housing production. Have you conducted any assessment to see whether Hong Kong will suffer from a structural deficit? Are there any measures to ensure our financial sustainability? As the member mentioned, that um this deficit we have been put under is as a result of the epidemic. We have allocated more funding to tackle these challenges. Say, for example, the setting up of the A E F as well as putting in place counter cyclical measures to relieve um livelihood difficulties. The consumption voucher scheme is outside the A E F, that is the anti epidemic measure, because that is one of the relief measures. But we do think that we need to provide assistance to those affected by the epidemic. And for various reasons, our expenditure increase increases resulting in a deficit. As to whether there will be a recurrent or structural deficit. Hong Kong is a fully um externally oriented economy, so we are subject to external uncertainties. We have volatilities. According to our medium to long term forecast, for twenty twenty three, twenty four and twenty four, twenty five for operating account, there will be a deficit. However, in subsequent year, there will be an increase in our surplus. So at this moment, it's too premature to say that we will suffer from a structural deficit. We undertake that we will continue to abide by Article one oh seven under the Basic Law. And that is to exercise physical prudence, to keep expenditure within the limits of revenue and to keep our expenditure comparable to our GDP. Um in to- on top of that, we will con- we will continue to abide by the zero growth in the civil service for twenty twenty three to twenty four. There are four members waiting to ask. Shanghai Long's been always at the end of the queue. But if we include him as well, we will overrun. I asked you to bear with me. Next, Mister Lam Chan Sing. I would like to follow up on zero six eight, that is in relation to outsourced non skilled workers. Just now, it's mentioned by the um under secretary that in the review of K P I, I will um you will review the remuneration of non skilled workers that are outsourced, that are under outsourced contracts. The reply is rather simple. Have you completed the review? Are you waiting to disclose the result? Or have you completed the review yet? What is the goal? To save money for the government or to enhance uh the right and remuneration of non skilled outsourced workers? What about the ratio between price and um technical aspects? How about shifting from awarding the tender to the lowest bidder? What about increasing the weighting to um remuneration or remuneration package or um occupational safety of workers? Would you add more elements in the as in the tender requirement to protect workers? I thank the member for the question. This gives me an opportunity to give you additional information. Let me give you some ex- uh information about our existing measures. Starting from twenty nineteen, we have put in place a number of enhancement measures, including increasing uh the weighting to the technical aspect to no less than fifty percent in the tender exercise. So it's no longer um lowest bidder wins. And in terms of remuneration under the technical aspect, the weighting has in has been increased to no less than twenty per- twenty five percent. We've also worked with the Labor and Welfare Bureau. The Bureau Secretary has set up a cross departmental working group in twenty twenty one. They have announced that in relation to government non skilled workers uh on outsized outsourced contracts in the report released on the first of April, starting from the first of April twenty nineteen, remuneration to this type of worker, workers has been improved. The question was about the review. The focus of the review is to see the engagement arrangements of non skilled workers under outsourced contracts, covering remunerations, monitoring mechanism, et cetera. We have completed the review in the first quarter of this year. We reckon that we'll be able to announce the details of the report in the second quarter of this year.
Next, Doctor Priscilla Leng. Thank you, Chair. I'd like to fo- follow up on F S T B T S Y zero six five. In twenty ten, we rolled out the ad valorem stamp duty measure to contain speculation activities. And we saw an increase in property price and the market on a three year period. We've been talking about competing for talents and for non permanent Hong Kong residents. If they want to buy properties in Hong Kong, they have to pay a double amount of the duty. In the mainland, for top talents, they can get the permanent residency. However, a lot of them were deterred because of the stamp duty measures. With such amount of tax, are you treating it as as an interest? The properties are in Hong Kong, but if they do not want to get the permanent residency in Hong Kong, we can have measures to recover the double stamp duties from them. That is, for those who can obtain permanent residency in Hong Kong, do we have to levy stamp duties from them? Or should they be charged for the four point seven five percent of duty instead, instead of paying um the double stamp duty? Secretary. Well, member is very familiar with the existing policy. In the budget this year, we have already talked about the tax system and I will not repeat the details here. Member asked whether we should look into the stamp duty policy further when we roll out the talent scheme. My question is, what are, how are you going to use the money when you get the tax revenue? Are you using it as an interest? On the question about tax, let's see if um our colleagues from I R D has any statistics. Mister Tem, any statistics? If you're talking about the quality migrant talent scheme, that that is people who are admitted through this scheme, we do not have the relevant statistics. They are paying for the same stamp duty. And there is no way for us to find out whether they are buying properties through the admission of this scheme. We do not have the relevant information. I think that you have to review your policy. Next, Mister Sunny Ten. Thank you, Chair.
I'd lo- like to follow up on question zero five four in relation to the procurement policy of the government. The central government supports Hong Kong to develop itself into a I N T hub. And one of the measures is to promote reindustrialization or modern industrialization. And one of the biggest biases is the administration and also organizations in the public sector. I hope that the government can take the lead to promote this culture and mentality to procure local products or to support local designs and research. And for instance, um using the outfits designed by locally designed. The administration may want to do a lot to promote this, but how are we going to encourage public bodies? For example, Airport Authority, M T R C and so on, to use locally designed products. You always talk about procedures in relation to why they cannot sell local products. But how can we work with local sectors or companies to see how they can make use of the local products? The public bodies have been reluctant to use local designs. I hope that through procurement, we can substantially increase the amount of local products you procure to encourage new industrialization. I'm glad to see that some cleaning workers have started to use local products. But I wonder if there is room to further expand this initiative. Secretary. Our procurement policy has to stick to the principles from World Trade Organization. And we have to encourage local and overseas bidders to take part in the tender exercise. S M Es account for most of the companies in Hong Kong and we have rolled out various measures. For instance, for non works procurement, we have already lowered the relevant threshold. The government departments cannot um blitz or use the experience as one of the uh criteria when submitting tenders. So that local enterprises have a bigger chance to win the bid. I understand that S M Es may not be able to take up big contracts, so we encourage departments to um split up the contracts to um allow S M Es to take part in the bidding. This may increase the cost, so we strive to streamline the tendering process. Last point, member mentioned about the way forward. We will continue to encourage the relevant departments to work with public bodies to see how we can encourage S M Es and I N T enterprises to benefit from our procurement policies. Next, Mister Shanghai Long. Please press the button button earlier next time, otherwise you won't get the chance to ask questions. I'd like to follow up on question zero six one. I'm concerned about the fund management of the administration. Over the past five years, there are nine point eight percent of revenue or return from the government. Do you have the relevant investment return figures for twenty twenty two and also the wealth management in the future? Also, one hundred billion dollars will be set aside for northern metropolis development. Does that mean you will not use this fund for management and when will you set aside the fund? Also, there's been changes to the Northern Metropolis Development Project. Originally, the government planned to build the project itself, but with uh the three buildings completed in River Loop, some of the sites will be auctioned. Will there be conflicts with the infrastructure fund? In the past, it was built by the government, but now it is built by private developers. How are you going to use the one hundred billion dollars? My first, for the first question, I will invite Mister Ronald Fan, Principal Assistant Secretary for Financial Services and Treasury to respond. Thank you, Chair. Regarding the investment return of the future fund for twenty twenty two, we do not have the relevant statistics yet because we have to wait for H K M A to um come up with a sum. to um come up with a summary. Second part of the question. F S announced in the budget that a hundred billion dollars will be set aside for Capital Works Reserve Fund to promote land and transport development of the northern metropolis project. The cumulative gains or return will be transferred to the fund, so we will continue to monitor the use of the fund. Any supplement? Mister Shang, that's all for your question. The session in the morning has been concluded and we will continue at two P M this afternoon.